Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No public hearings today, no presentations today. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
If we could, I'd like to add, after 10:4, 10:5, just to discuss about reopening plans.
Is everybody okay with that? Do we have Clint on the line?
Oh, we forgot Clint.
I didn't know I was supposed to call him.
Oh, that's me. That was totally me. I forgot about him.
Hello?
Hello? I'm sorry, I forgot you a little bit. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
Can you hear everybody, Clint?
I can.
Okay, good. We've just done the pledge.
Thanks.
And Julie wanted to make an adjustment to the agenda to discuss reopening under 10.5. So I'm asking if everybody's comfortable with that. Is there any objection?
No.
Okay, that'll be a change to the agenda then. Any citizens' comments at all there, Max?
Not yet. Just, yes, check the volume. Nothing's over.
Okay, we can come back to that in case someone wants to say something. Select Board comments. Katie?
Just said I'm brokenhearted that we just didn't have a Memorial Day celebration to celebrate fallen heroes. I was very sad about that.
I missed that.
I see other towns were doing it, but I don't know what happened to us, why we couldn't do it. They had a thing up in the park up there in Rockland, so I don't know. I'm very sad about the whole thing. I mean, we should have done something for them.
Well, we got word that it was canceled, so.
Yeah.
How come they did it and nobody else?
I didn't ask. I.
Well, it was up to, it should have been up to the American Legion. I know they put flags out.
We were told that it was canceled.
I'm very sad about it. First time in how many years that we never had a chance to do it, so. I'm just sad about the whole thing.
Next year.
That's all.
Okay, thanks, Captain.
Nope, nothing.
Jan?
I wore my Memorial Day scarf.
Wow.
In honor, because we didn't get to do anything, and the parade always comes to me, and I like it, and then I follow it. And, you know, it's been a tradition for very many years, so that was, I agree with you, Katie, I was sad about that. I contacted the mail-for-you company about the signs the next day, and she has ordered signs. They say, just what we said, congratulations, Dalmac Valley graduate, blue and gold. And I thought she'd said they'd be ready the end of last week, but I got a message this morning that they will be ready Thursday. So I'll go pick them up, and I'm not sure how I can bring them here, or I don't know how we want to distribute. But I thought we could each put one in our homes, you know, in our yards, two, and then we have, they're 50. They're $10 apiece, so.
Plus tax.
Right, there'll be tax and also. She didn't give me a final number. You know, I asked her, and she said she'd give it to me when I picked them up. So I'll have the.
And you ordered 50?
50, yep, ordered 50.
Cool.
So, hope that's good. I did get a call from somebody suggesting that maybe, and I forgot to pass it on to you, Julie, closing down Main Street, I mean Friendship Street like they do on Wilder Road Day. That's in front of the block, that section, for when stores do open up. Like, apparently Rockland is doing that and some others temporarily. I was in Halifax a year or two ago at a family reunion, and they have this road in downtown Halifax that on weekdays, cars go through it. On weekends, it's closed off, and it's like a plots, you know, where there are people eating outside and walking all over. And I thought it was an interesting concept, that by weekday, it's a road, and then they have something at the ends, and it becomes more of a, I don't know what you call that, I mean, Germany.
So where would, they wanted it closed from?
Just in front of the sprawl block.
Yeah, that, where Dogland comes around, just that.
We'd have to get permission from the state, and there might be an issue with the truck traffic.
Even just on the weekends, if it were just on the weekends.
But, oh, it's a truck route.
Right, I get it.
So where would you reroute the truck?
Dogland, down Pleasant Street?
They won't be able to make that corner.
That corner's going to be, that corner on a hill is going to be. I don't think the state would approve it, but anyway, it was a suggestion from a, from a citizen, interesting thought.
For what reason? Just to have it blocked off?
So that people could shop and not have to worry about, and maybe restaurants could eat outside, just so people could keep distance and yet still shop.
I hope it'll be all over by then.
Summer?
I don't know, I mean, we, you're just gonna have some issues with the larger trucks that have to get to Friendship.
Yeah, store has a big delivery on a Saturday, and the road's closed off. What's he gonna do?
Yeah. I mean, we can ask. If you want me to ask the state, you guys should actually vote to authorize me to do it.
I thought it was something to think about. I didn't know that we needed to go, you know, take real action today, but it's something to think about, and we do it for, we've done it, except for the last couple of years, for a day every year.
That's right, we have.
Yeah, and it starts early in the morning, like, I don't know, 8:30, 9:00, and it doesn't open up until, it used to be after the dance, 11 o'clock maybe, 10 or 11 at night. So they, I mean, it's something that we've done for a day.
A day.
A day. Yeah, but I don't know if we could do it for two days, who knows? But we did do it. It was a Saturday, that's when.
No, I like the idea.
Yeah, and the people did come around the loop and around. I mean, it was, people didn't.
I think you're gonna get some, I mean, if you're gonna do this every weekend, that could become quite a, I.
No, you're right too.
It's a tough thing.
It's not a slam dunk by any means.
Yeah, but it's, it's an interesting idea that one of our citizens called me and asked me if I would present that as an idea, that's it.
Has anybody discussed it with merchants at all on?
I don't know, I don't know if that person did or not. The stores are closed.
You'd have to call.
Except the drugstore, yeah, the drugstore's still open.
I actually have a comment from Seth Hall. Do you want me to read the entire email, or should I do it bullet points?
Your call.
Oh, for a public comment?
Yeah. I just, when I left the room, I got a message from Seth Hall saying, he sent me an email a while ago. So I'll read it just as it says. I'll skip the first paragraph, just because that's about staying safe. "It has been over a year now that we have been told that a Newtown website would be created soon. I believe that last year's budget may have even contained a specific line item to cover this expense. At select board meetings last fall and right through this winter, we were told again, told and again, that the new website was coming soon. It is now almost five months later and still no new website. At a select board meeting in January, I believe, the chairman suggested that anyone looking for information could always just call the town hall and ask. Clearly, this is not an appropriate response to the town not having a full and functional website for residents and interested others to use when seeking information about our town, inquiring about license renewals, car registrations, and other such information, certainly not in 2020. When can we expect the new website to appear, and can we be assured that it will contain all of the past records, links to meetings, minutes, et cetera, the, I think it means that exist on our current time-worn website?" And that was from Seth Hall.
Thank you. I think the ball's on their court, isn't it?
Yeah, we've done the, what was it called?
The review of the map, site map?
The site map. We did the review of the site map. That's where we're at with it. I mean, we've, Tanya has been phenomenal with this. I've been involved in it. Some of it was a little bit of a lag, I think, through the COVID a little bit. You know, by the time we decided which one we were going with in that, it's, this is where we're at. And I do think people get a, at least from, at least especially during the COVID. We updated the website. Social media, you know, is updated regularly. People seem to enjoy calling the office if you have the phone. I mean, honestly, it's been, it's been quite interesting. I was here Friday, on our first Friday technically closed, and I was answering the phone all morning. Everybody was really happy and willing to work with us, but.
So, and it still remains that people do have questions and they can't find the answer online.
If you can't find the answer online.
Call the office.
Call the office, but, you know, everything on vehicle registrations, I think it's on the right-hand side, upper right-hand side is there. You know, we had all the COVID information on it, and I also believe we had the, rapid renewals been on Facebook, boat registration's been on Facebook, everything has been there. How we're operating now is on there.
It's working the best to our ability, and people need to be.
Well, it's been, it's been, we know we have issues with it. And, you know.
Long was until then a day.
And it says right on it, we know, it's, we know the issues, and if you have questions, call us.
Call the office.
So to summarize that comment would be, could you please give an update on the website? Is that what?
Yeah, and Seth has now, Seth has said that it's been a year later and he would like a more definitive answer.
I, I mean, literally, what, two weeks ago, we gave them the site map.
Yep.
I don't, I don't, I'd have to look at what.
Maybe he'd like the number of the company doing it.
I don't think I'd like to do that to the company who's doing that. I mean, we're at the point where we've done what we can. They're dealing with, they're working, I'm assuming remotely from whenever in February or March. I, you know, it is what it is. We're doing the, literally doing the best we can.
Definitely not on the back burner.
It's not on the back burner, and although we did put money into the budget last year, I don't think we picked a vendor till the fall. Yeah, and then we had to be put in their.
Their queue.
Their queue, so.
It's a work in progress.
I thought it would be quicker too, but.
I think we all did.
I think we all did.
So, thank you for the update.
It's gonna be what it's gonna be.
And thank you, Jan, for your comments. Julie, town manager's report?
Yeah, Clint too.
Oh, yeah, Clint, I'm sorry.
You forgot Clint.
Clint?
That's all right, that's all right. Just a couple of things, and probably Julie's gonna speak about the absentee vote, and I'm not sure where I, a couple of people have asked me, and I said, I think, but I don't know, and I've tagged Julie a couple of times, just because I really don't know. But, so that, that's one thing, and I just wanna, even though I did to Julie, a great job the public works, namely, John Daigle for a great job on the Diva Road, and we had other good comments there. I just wanted to share that with everyone.
And I do have something I need to add of my own. We've scheduled a meeting with Steve Nolan Thursday at 5:00.
This Thursday?
This Thursday at 5:00.
Oh, okay.
Union office.
At the union school?
I guess we're all welcome to go.
Town office.
This is a school, school board?
Yep.
School board.
At the superintendent's office.
It'll just be Steve and the business manager, I think. I don't know if Danny Jackson will be there. He's learning to 10 people. They can't accommodate more than 10 people in the room.
Right, right.
Okay, so at the superintendent's office, at the union school?
He said at the office and union.
Yeah, okay, that's at the old Deergol.
What's this on?
Upstairs, Deergol School.
This Thursday, day after tomorrow, 5:00.
What is it on?
It's about their budget.
Okay.
So if you're all going, I have to notice them, because then it becomes a meeting.
Yep.
So you have to let me know if you're all going.
We can decide that now, and then you're.
Yes, you can. You need to decide that now.
We would like to go. Three of us, that's a meeting, so we have to notice.
I will do that.
Well, Katie can go too, yeah.
Once it's noticed.
She's just gonna make an notice that week.
Right, but, I mean, I didn't want Katie to think she.
Okay, here's.
Clint gonna go?
Clint, I don't probably know.
I don't think so. Clint, are you going?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I see him quite often, but I don't discuss any business.
All right, Julie, so we're gonna notice the meeting, we'll meet up there at 5:00 at his office.
I will notice the meeting.
Have a conversation.
Does that, okay, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And did you have anything you wanted to report today?
Just want to thank everybody again for the stellar job they're doing with the food pantry. It's been, it's been great, having a, a lot of success with that. But we, our numbers were a little bit down, but just a scoach today, so I think that's something that's been extremely worthwhile to the community. So I just wanted to mention that.
What, the amount of people coming in to get the food?
Yeah.
How many came out?
I think the count was like around in the end, like 115, 116, and we've been averaging 124, 125, so.
Okay.
We're trying.
Great job.
Thanks, we're trying.
Yeah, I know you are.
People were very thankful.
They are extremely thankful, yes, they are.
Very kind.
Good people.
I see you resolved to end it up food.
Sweeten them up with candy, you know, just little, other little things, you know, if they wanted. Yeah, they were quite appreciative of any little something.
Julie has it down to almost a science, almost.
Your resume.
Yeah.
Administrator of, geez.
Well, it's the ordering. It's trying to get the order right, and I gotta be honest with you, because you never are sure. If you're gonna have, one week you have a preponderance of one- and two-person families. The next week you might have more three- and four-person families.
Absolutely.
And then the next week you might have more of the five- and six-person families, you know, so you just don't know.
So are you putting together a book, the how-to book?
Jeff is gonna get a how-to book of what you do and what you put in it and where to order everything.
And all of that.
Well, who would have thought we could find, like, sources that are far away growing potatoes, but so close to home, because their grandmother and I go to church together, like, you wouldn't think of that, you know what I'm saying? Like, Janet Spear told me who to call for potatoes, and it turns out it's Janet Brayley's grandson.
Yeah, it's Brayley potatoes.
Yeah, it's Ethan, and I forget her other grandson's name, but yeah, it's kind of interesting.
That's nice, and I was watching where I was sitting today, watching Marcus, and what a, what a nice job. He was very organized, and he was, he was in a, kind of a take-charge mode.
We are, we are doing really well.
That was good, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You might want to say something about your job as a town clerk.
Oh, Clint, the absentee ballots, yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about.
Thank you.
So, I don't know what your question, I was at the food pantry most of the day, and then I was doing petition. I was checking petitions, so I didn't get a chance to look on Facebook at all. But absentee ballots are available. They're not printed yet, so you can sign up on the website. There's a website that you can sign up on at the state, it's linked, and I believe I put that on our website and our Facebook page, so that's all linked. We have in front of us.
Can they come in and get a ballot, or no?
Not right now, you can't come in yet. We, our order date is the 27th for the ballots.
27th.
Everybody's order date in Maine is the 27th, yeah.
27th of June.
Of, no, of.
27th of May.
Of May is the order date, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's a condensed, everybody's got a, and even the Secretary of State, if you read his information, the information, and they just put out a video, is you can apply for them now, and as soon as we have them, we will mail them to you. But you can't come in the town office right now and get one, because they're not even printed yet.
Okay.
You know, I actually called today to see if we had a proof done of the ballot. So, it was in on time, it's just a matter of getting it all.
Yep.
All done, and I did confirm they got ours, so we're in the same vote as every other municipality. And unfortunately, I think what happened is everybody thought there was going to be guidance from the state at some point, or that it might become an all-absentee ballot or something, and that's, it's going to be in-person and absentee voting.
Good, good.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if we can go to Walmart and stand in line, we can certainly stand.
Well, but bear in mind how long, and that's, Katie, and that's, that's true, but you have to bear in mind that when we have that, we're going to be social distancing. So we're going down to only, we're only gonna have six stations to vote at.
I know. They have to do that at Walmart, Lowe's, they have to stand outside, six feet apart.
But you have to understand how much longer it's gonna take.
Right.
So I can't, you know, there's, I think Darrell said.
I'm playing, Julie.
Well, I just want everybody to be aware, you're not gonna come in and stand, you're gonna have one person at each of those stations.
I haven't heard from anybody who enjoys standing in line, no matter what they're doing, buying groceries, waiting for their car to get fixed.
Right, that's my only concern, is that if everybody says, oh, we have in-house, we're having in-person voting, yes, we are. But it's not gonna be where you can have all those people voting at one time.
Yeah.
We still have to limit numbers and control it, so it's, if you come to vote in person, expect to wait in line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can have chairs out there?
So absentee.
Chairs out where, do you?
Sorry?
When you vote absentee, do you mail it in?
You can.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I usually come because it's handy, but what did you say, Katie?
I don't like to stand.
Chairs where?
Have chairs every, you know.
But then you need somebody to disinfect every chair.
I know, I know. Okay, getting back to the absentee ballot, they can't go out until 45 days before the vote, right?
I don't even have them to send them out. Katie, I would have to look that up. I don't have any of those dates in my head.
If that's the case, then I think they can go out June 1st. It'll be 45.
Katie, I don't have them.
No, I know. When we get, didn't you say they were coming in on the 28th?
No, I said I can't even order them until I, until tomorrow. I don't, that's what I'm saying, is we are under a whole different, there's a whole different world going on out there. We're doing the best we can with what we've got, but.
No, I know it, I know it.
But, but our issue is, we had to have our, our town information in by, what was that, the 12th or the 15th?
The 12th.
It was the 12th, yeah, and then by tomorrow, I have to figure out what to order, so I gotta figure out how many absentee ballots to order. I mean, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Because how do you know?
How do you know?
Because.
You don't know from the last vote?
Well, of course, totally different, it's gonna be.
This is a totally different thing.
Yeah, I mean, we've already got, I mean, there's no way for me, I can go back, we've surpassed already how many ballots have been requested before, so, but how many more people between, when I order them tomorrow and July are going to request absentees, and that's, you know, I've been on, I've called the elections up at the state quite a bit. Max and I were working on that today, so.
It would be nice if people would sign up sooner rather than later, so we have some numbers to work with.
Do they know this, to do this?
It's on the website.
It's on, well, it's on social media, it's on the website, it's, it's on the news. The Secretary of State put out a YouTube video on it. I don't, you know.
Okay.
We're doing the best we can with what we've got to work with. I hate to say that, but in this true case, I think I read that ARP is sending out something about absentee voting. We got an email about that on the clerks' information emails, that ARP is sending out information about, and really pushing absentee voting to all of its members, so that's gonna be something.
Again, I hope people vote absentee. Why put yourself at risk by standing in line?
Right.
Help us get it done more efficiently by doing it absentee, it just makes it process.
I mean, all of my ballot clerks so far have said they are coming, but we have to just, you know, and that's part of this, is it sounds easy, well, we'll just put chairs there, okay, but who's gonna clean the chair every time? Who, who, who do I, who do I have to do that? And, and, I mean, it's, there's, every day there's a question on the ClerkServeNet or whatever it's called, is are you gonna have disposable pens? Who's gonna sanitize the pen? I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to it, so.
We need to make it easier rather than harder for people to vote.
If you're gonna come in and vote, bring your own pen.
Not everybody thinks the way you do, Katie.
Well, I can get it out there in short order.
Yeah, well, if you do get it out there, please tell them to vote absentee.
Well, I, first of all, I think that that's something that the state has to give us guidance on. I'm not gonna, I'm not in charge of pens, I'm just trying to follow the rules that exist.
I was referring more to the idea of if you're gonna talk to people, encourage them to vote absentee, encourage them to vote.
I want them to come.
Before coming to the town hall.
I want them to come, sorry.
I think that, the ones I talked to, Julie, I think their point was, I don't think they knew if they could come to the town office to get the absentee.
They can't yet, no.
Once they get ahold of you, you'll, you'll, you'll send them one, when they come in.
Right, and if they go online at the state and fill it out, it's very easy to do. And that's, it comes to us every day, we get an email with how many were requested, and they can call up, we can walk them through it.
Yeah, okay.
But the ballot itself to vote is not here in the building.
Yeah, okay. That's good, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Yeah.
I received another question from Seth Hall. Is there going to be a meet-the-candidate night this year?
I asked JW, and JW said yes, and JW was working on dates. So he was going to actually give us some choices of dates. That was my understanding. He has other commitments, so he, we had had him scheduled, but then I guess there's other, there's some state legislator races that he wanted to do, and I also did just say, you know, I allow, I did offer them the ability to have it here since we have the.
Got the video.
Got the video.
That's good.
Yep. Okay, anything more before we move on?
Just that Julie is, and Max are taking the position of the town clerk, and they're doing a good job with that. Trying to stay up to date with everything, and I think they're, I think they're to be commended.
Thank you, I agree.
I think we're having fun.
Aren't we, Max?
So much fun.
Yeah.
He's smiling, nice smile.
Well, you know, it's not, I mean, I kind of did this for a while in New Jersey, but it is a little, it's the, it's the little differences that you're not.
I know the feeling.
You're not used to, it's just slightly different, like, on these petitions we got in today, in the CVR system, you should be able to set it up so that you can, so that you can double-check you're not letting somebody sign two petitions. But they only let you have it if it's local, and these were state petitions, so I couldn't use, so.
It's the same petition, we should clarify that.
Yeah. Yeah, ranked choice voting was the petition, but like, somebody drops them off last week, how do I know that these aren't the same? So it's just little things, like finding out how each system works differently. It's kind of interesting, actually. I've enjoyed the challenge.
Anything more? Okay, we'll move on. The concept calendar, is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, that was Katie made the motion, Clint seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's five-zero, including Clint's aye.
Aye, aye, captured.
New business. Approval of trust fund conversions.
I don't know if you all got to look at this.
Yeah, we have, I'll just go ahead, we have three trust funds that are very, very old, one dates back to 1858. And they all have very archaic language about who the money's intended for, usually widows, orphans of good moral, widows of good moral character.
Worthy!
Worthy widow.
Thank you.
The alliteration in there is kind of fun.
Standards are different back then than they are now, and it's very difficult to know what they meant. So the idea is to put them all together in one trust. We have to go to court to do this, because the amounts are in the trust. And if we get a judgment in our favor, in that package, there's a letter that is written by the Attorney General to the town, it's a draft, simply confirming that the court has issued its order, and the order would be to combine all the trusts into one, and it would be under the direction of the Walderboro Select Board. And the idea is that those monies would be used to help people in Walderboro. Kind of like, kind of like the Philbrook Fund is now.
Certainly makes sense.
Yeah.
Has this process already been started?
Well, we have to approve it.
Oh, I'll get you, okay.
Yeah, it's waiting for us, and then it'll go forward. We have to put a date in there, it would be today's date.
Right, and then I just need to get the updated, these are what, they were the first quarter, the updated amounts.
So, is there a motion?
Some motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's an aye from Clint and four hands at the table, thank you.
The unworthy widows will be happy.
If you could read some of the language in these, it's been pretty park, and I have had very interesting conversations about this on the phone.
Quite a name.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
Yeah, that's a great name.
Wonderful.
So the next item on the agenda is to appoint Lee Bennett and Israel Harvey to the Shellfish Committee.
I would move that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Katie and I did make some calls, we got to talk to Lee, but we couldn't get Israel, so, but you know them both, don't you?
We do.
Yep.
And so does Clint. Any discussion?
That'd be a great asset.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
That's five-zero. July Town Warrant.
So you have those.
And I, I went through the numbers again, and made tally.
Yes, they do. Everybody went through the numbers.
Why nobody's telling?
I thank Tanya for sending me this.
And I will, I have to apologize, Thursday was a little crazy at the end of the day in the office, so.
I understand.
We're getting used to Thursday being the new Friday.
Yeah.
So at our meeting on the 12th, we approved the amounts, but we didn't approve this document that we have on our hands right now, Clint.
I would move approval.
And we do need to set a hearing date.
Well, it has to be next week, next, in two weeks.
It's our, that's gonna be our.
Yeah, I already published it because we're under time fringes.
So it'll be the first meeting in June?
Correct.
Yeah.
Puts us on to June 9th.
Right.
So I guess if there's a motion to accept the warrant as presented and to set June 9th.
I'll accept that, do you, do you want the 9th as part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so move.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's five-zero, thank you.
Yep.
A payment of county taxes.
We had discussed earlier in the year about moving it to four times per year.
Right. I don't know how we got to six, but.
Well, or six, it could, but it made sense, what didn't make sense is, they need their two payments early. So we can't really, that doesn't fit with our fiscal calendar.
Right.
And we could've this year, that's the thing, if it wasn't for COVID, we, we could've probably helped them out. You know what I'm saying, help us, help you? But we, I just, we can't do it now, obviously.
Right.
So.
So the motion is to do four payments?
No, 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 the, the motion is to leave it alone.
So no change?
So we're, we're just gonna do the, yeah, we're not gonna change how we pay the county this year. We, we just, we can't, given the uncertainty, we just can't.
Right, it's a cash flow issue from what I understand.
Yeah, it's a cash flow issue on their end, and it is theirs every year.
Yeah.
Because they're on a calendar year versus us being on a fiscal year.
So they'll be paid up, up to in full on October 31st of this year.
Right.
For our allocation.
Right.
By their calendar year. All right, so we don't need to do anything, no action required.
We just have to rescind that we wanted to do it.
Do you need a motion on that, Bob?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would, I would move that.
You're moving to rescind the previous motion?
Right.
The previous, uh, action? Okay, any, is there a second?
Second.
Jan seconds, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's five-zero, thanks, Clint.
Yep.
And ten-five, reopening plan.
So, we started with appointments last week, and being open to the public by appointment, and our first week went, I thought, extremely well, with only a few people yelling at me and calling me an idiot. So I thought, I took that as a good thing. And I think, to be very honest, it's just people who, I, I don't even think they really wanna come in, I just think that they think we should be open and not wearing masks, and I'm not gonna get into that debate with anybody, but.
Right.
So I, I don't know what to say to that part of it, but what I do have something to say to is, we did receive guidance from the state on how to open. They're doing a lot by appointment, BMV is doing a lot by appointment. What we found, the people that made appointments were very jovial about it and happy, because they come in, they're by themselves, they're in and out of here in 10 tops, 15 minutes, they're not waiting, they have a scheduled appointment, they seem to like it.
Yep.
If we follow the guidance that we're given, I can't have technically more than one person in here anyway.
Just because the space doesn't.
Because of the space doesn't, the six-foot social distancing rule does not allow it.
Yeah.
So I think what we need to do is, and I wanted to run this by you guys, is do we want to have the, continue with by appointment?
I think.
Until July 1st?
If you're comfortable with that.
Well, I, I think it does a couple of things. We have given everybody the ability to register vehicles online, well, no, renew vehicles online, renew boats online. We've been taking the people who want, have new registrations in to the office. And doing them, and that's who we're scheduling appointments for. I'm sure we'll have to eventually start with the renewals when we get through all the people with registrations. And we'll have to start with renewals. We can also have people drop off the renewal, and I think what was getting some people upset is, we want you to drop off your renewal, put a self-study stamp envelope, and we'll send you everything. They wanna come back and just get it. So I think maybe what we need to do is just take them in in the morning, and then at the end of the day, come and pick them up. I, I, we'll figure out something to make that maybe process a little bit easier. But I think the, the appointment is working well. The other thing we have to consider is, Rose is pretty much, you know, the only game in town, I'm not, I don't do BMV, Max doesn't do BMVs. So if we could keep up with the appointments, I think that's a good thing. Anybody else who has to come in, we're really encouraging to use this room. So if there's like, has to be a meeting, use this room. Daryl hasn't gotten any requests, he hasn't been able to handle by having somebody come in through the back door. But we really are limiting, and we are asking everybody, because we're following the guidance from the state and from the MMA has given us to wear a mask when you come in. We do have two at-risk employees. So when you are in the office, we are asking that you wear a mask.
Yeah, that's, that's very reasonable.
It is.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, it's respectful to those.
I, I, you know, I mean, I think, I think we, I think we're all doing a, a good job of, we're trying our, our darnedest to accommodate everybody's thoughts and, and.
And I, I know that.
And just so you know, we are, when you come in for your appointment, the counters wa, wake down, the pens are wiped down, Tanya or Peg or somebody scurries out, and they wake down the doors, so it's not like we're not scurrying around cleaning. And just, I have to say, it is, the same people scurrying around and cleaning up after every customer are the same people who got 20% of their salaries cut, so I just have to point that out, that we've had to make budget cuts, so we've cut people's salaries, and they're still here doing above and beyond what they ever thought they would do in their jobs. So I, I have to say that, because how they have performed and done their jobs has been just spectacular.
And I think it's important to add to that, that this board is very, very grateful that they have stepped up the way they have.
They have, I mean.
Working hard to keep things on an even keel.
I, I can't imagine, you know, because every time somebody's cleaning something, they're putting themselves in that. So, and you know, you try to have that conversation, I tried to have that conversation with somebody who, on Friday, I was in the office answering the phone, even though technically we're closed, and I was trying to explain, well, this is ridiculous, and I'm just like, but sir, we gotta clean up, like, these are the rules, and we've gotta play within the rules, so. It is what it is.
So it's gonna be.
Well, I'd like your, I'd like your thoughts of what you guys think.
I think what you're doing, my view is, I think what you're doing is great, and.
Were you able to keep up with appointments?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you call on the same day, you probably won't get an appointment, but if you plan ahead, you'll get an appointment.
Justin's put the applications first.
Oh, the Shellfish applications are outside, and we, and they call, and we tell people, and that's been great.
And they can just throw them in the.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's interesting when you talk to people about, you know, because how, how do I pay my taxes? You can mail them, or you can drop them in the box, and they're like, well, I never thought about mailing them. People don't, they don't realize, you know, and I get, some people don't wanna do things online, and we totally get it. So come in and, come, come in and, and we'll take care of you, you just need an appointment, or we can do your renewal by mail.
Yeah.
Just a all-new way of doing business, and people just, you know.
Takes a while.
I mean, in all honesty, I think, I think a majority of the people are very happy to do the appointment. I literally can count on, in a week of me taking calls, and on Friday, I had three people who were very unhappy. And like I said, I, I couldn't tell, I, they never quite got to the root of what their unhappiness was, it's just that they couldn't, they couldn't come in, and I, I was like, but you can come in, you just have to make an appointment, and we're closed today. You know, and I wanna register my boat, okay, but you can do that online, and then the guy was happy, he was like, well, oh, whole new world, so. And I think it's gonna change how we do business in the future, I really do, I think it's, it's definitely gonna change, definitely. And I, you know, I've said this, and I've said this to you, now would've been the perfect time for us to have all the new bells and whistles, you know, on, on the website, so.
It's far more efficient.
It would be, and, and, you know, we could link automatically to things, it's great, but we're playing the hand we've been dealt.
Yeah. I think everyone's doing well, and I, I certainly appreciate it.
No, it's, it's, no.
So not too many naysayers?
Only, like I said, I got three, I don't know, and, and I have to be honest, everybody's being, I think, really, they're trying, I think part of the issue is, and like Katie said it, if you can stand in Walmart, why can't you stand in the town office? Well, and that's part of what the problem is, is I don't have the space constraint, I have, I have a space issue. How would I then, how do I keep people from crossing? You know, because you're supposed to eliminate the crossing, and I'm, I'm just like, well, I, I really can't, you know? Well, then somebody said, oh, round through the office, I'm like, okay, but then, then we've exposed two of our, you know, immunocompromised employees to somebody walking through, you know, the office, and it's just.
Could you run them through here?
Well, and then, but what if somebody's here? So.
Are we, have we exhausted this one?
I think we have, I feel confident in what you would like me to do.
So we're as-is until July?
We're as-is, I think, until July, unless something amazing happens or something else turns.
I think it's wise to, I think it's wise to be cautious at this point.
Since it's working.
I just wanna make sure we're following what we should be following, and that everybody is
Yep.
Doing what they need to do.
Yeah. Alrighty, moving on, there's no old business. The agenda item for our next meeting is a hearing for the warrant.
Yep.
Is there anything else you'd like to have on the agenda for next week, for, for first meeting in June, sorry? Okay.
Oh, I know, we'll probably have an audit report done, we might wanna have the auditor attend by Zoom.
Yep.
That's another thing, Peg and I spent a lot of time last week working on, was just, there's a little balancing issue with the in trio that we're trying to nail down, so we've been working on that.
I didn't hear from them on the transfer station, so I assume everybody's happy with that?
No, they should've heard from you on that, so.
You want, you want me to call?
Yes, could we call?
I'll call them.
Call Karen Oliveri.
Okay, I'll give them a call.
Yeah, they had a question about, and this predates me, and it predates Peg, about the transfer station.
The allocation.
The allocations, when the scales were put in and everything, so Bob's the only one with the, he was the head of the transfer station committee at the point, at that point, or you were? Oh, I thought you were.
It was just the transfer station committee.
The committee, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said, head of the transfer station committee.
Yeah.
That was a lively time.
That was.
I recall.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Clint.
Thanks, Clint.